Sound.
Is that Dennis?
Yes, I do.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Evansville Vanderburg Public Library Board of Trustees today, December fifteenth. And we have no visitors, but we do have a piece of correspondence from a patron. I'll pass that around to the other board members to review. And then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to consider the consent agenda for approval?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding any of the items on consent?
Yeah, I just wanna say one thing. In the director's report, Becky Miller at West put in a personal note about missing item report, which when she started was twenty-six pages long and is now gone from six to three pages, something she's rightfully proud of. And as a library patron, I know anytime I pull up something that I'm looking for and it says missing item, it is always disheartening. So them to do this is fantastic.
I have three questions. First on, I saw the staff. Sierra is moving on. Do we have a business librarian lined up or is that?
We do not. We will be hiring, again, hiring another librarian.
Okay.
But we do have other people that are trained to fill that role while she's gone.
Okay.
But we'll just have to figure out who takes lead for going to like Urep meetings and stuff that may be one of us too.
Second is on the technology discussion. We're I obviously, it's a fairly large project, but on the migration to the ILS, what prompted that? I was just curious.
We've been with the same ILS forever. Brett, twenty-year, the same vendor, and we went out to RFP just to see what was out there. I've worked with other ILSs, other staff members who've come here from other libraries who work with other ILSs, and it was just time to take a look again. And and we did, and we'll have a recommendation. We put a whole task force together to investigate this, but it's it's like any other contracts. We have like database contracts. We review those annually or biannually when they come up and say, is this a database we need to keep? We work with the public service staff. Is this what we need to keep? Do we not want to keep it? And that way, we can also renegotiate price as well. And and sometimes you get a lower price. Sometimes you get them to throw in extra databases, those types of things. So.
Very good, very good. Appreciate that. And then lastly, red and the red envelope role description project. What?
Going through the salary survey, part of the salary survey that Heather is working on is they're taking a look at our role descriptions and making sure they fit the needs for what people are doing as part of the sour survey and also to make sure they're current and legal up to date with the basically the legal jarring that they need to have in them as a role description.
Okay.
And obviously, when all that project's done, then it goes through Steve and Aaron, our lawyers. So as well as the board, because you've adopted all those at one time. That's been the history of adopting those role descriptions as you get a review of them as well.
Right, very good. Thank you.
Any further discussion regarding consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And moving on to governance. Lamont.
Good afternoon, evening, whatever we consider outside right now. It's a little dark. First item that I'd like to discuss was the proposals that received for the EVPL North Park and Oakland exterior wood trim. This year, we've been looking at the care and the restoration of all of the exterior wood at both North Park and Oakland. And with the set, I reached out to a local small business contractor, Hoppy and Dewboard Construction, and had them come out, look at the work. When we received their quote, we realized that it was it exceeded our threshold. So we had to put it out as an RFP. We issued the RFP to contractors. We placed it on the website. And after receiving five responses, we discussed it with the Building and Grounds Committee, and we recommend using the ICI bid based on the price and also the staying our longstanding relationship with them.
So we would need that in the form of a motion to accept that recommendation. Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation of the the team?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I believe I heard. Any discussion?
What was the total price compared to the other prices? Was this the lowest one?
ICI was the lowest bid. Yes, sir.
Tim, your packet.
Do we have any idea how they can do it for half of what the other people were bidding?
We we did a walk around. We brought everybody together. We all did a walk around. We did actually issue a what was it?
An addendum.
An addendum. Sorry, I drew a blank on the word. We issued an addendum from the discussion that we had while we were out there. ICI attended both North Park and Oakland, and I've worked with Eric before and his head laborer was there with him. So I'm not sure how they can. I can't speak for them, but.
If it is apples to apples.
Yes, I was going going through the list.
There's a comparison chart in your packet and it has a check mark for responsiveness. And also, you might note that under Oakland, they were significantly lower when they separated out North Park from Oakland. So Oakland was a little bit was the deciding factor, I think, as far as their total price or their total proposal.
The grounds committee, when we reviewed, obviously, one of the things that we looked for is a gotcha was was measures on linear feet or square footage. And I think the way we handled it of leaving it up to the contractors, they were the ones that determined the measures. So they got it wrong. It's all it's all on there.
Well, I appreciate that. I didn't fully, all they should have is just industrials always hire anybody else.
Well, and if you think this is kind of a really, we talked about that, you know, they're known for heavy industrial projects.
They're known for what?
Buildings, schools.
Yeah.
So.
She can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You said they're known for what?
Very large industrial projects, dams, large tall buildings, factories. This is a really small project.
I have a question. So you said that we have a longstanding relationship with industrial, right? So are they consistent with staying with the bid or do they over, do they under? Have they ever come in and say, hey, this is what we bid it, but we have an additional? Are they fairly working within what their bid is?
They very fairly working within their bid. We've we've used them on numerous projects. And we don't usually have a issue with, you know, every project, there's going to be that surprise that that we didn't see or that wasn't seen upfront. But they have been consistent with with what the price they give us is what they do the work for.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the bid from industrial contractors, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And Lamont, I believe you're also talking about snow.
Don't. We aren't going to use the four-letter word today. We aren't going to talk about that. It's possible next week, but let's not discuss it. So during this year, during some roof inspections that we had, we had a roofing contractor out here, Layman Roofing, who we use quite a bit with the library. They came out, they were doing some patchwork. And we've noticed, started noticing, and this last year, we had some problems with the ice that comes off of the metal roof that covers the library popper proper. And the ice and the snow comes down and it's been damaging the roof membrane, causing small holes here and there. We did have a leak actually in the second floor of the library last year that we had to protect and get to cover, but it was because of the ice coming off. We had a really big ice event last year. So that comes off of the metal roof. After talking to them, it was recommended that we look at putting up a snow guard around the exterior of the building on the metal roof side to try and prevent this ice from coming down in such big chunks and causing a problem and then also falling to the ground and causing any damage on the ground. We did have Layman Roofing come out. They did the walk around. They gave us the initial quote. Same as the other quote, they it was above our threshold. So we put out an RFP, and we had two people respond to the RFP, Layman Roofing and Ace Roofing. And after discussion with the Building and Grounds Committee, we recommend going with the Ace Roofing proposal.
So do we have that in the form of a motion?
The move.
A motion and second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the motion to award the contract to Ace Roofing signify by saying aye, and those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Lori, transfer of appropriations.
It's that time of year where we need to do some appropriation transfers to ensure that each of our individual line items within the budget are covered for the expenditures that are have been made or anticipated through the end of the year, as well as covering our encumbrances that will be presented here shortly after this resolution. So whereas it has been determined that it's necessary to transfer appropriations from and to various budget items in the Library Operating Fund, Library Improvement Reserve Fund, and Rainy Day Fund. And now therefore be it resolved that the Evansville Vanderburg Public Library perform the following transfers, and you'll see in the first page, the Library Operating Fund. Again, these are individual line items. And I've pointed out the significant one, and we've talked about it all year long, and that's the e-audiobooks. The price of those individual titles went up this year, as well as the actual usage of our e-audiobooks has significantly increased and stayed high after the pandemic and a lot of people went to digital resources. So our total items or lines in increases increases are two hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-five cents. And then the corresponding line items where we pulled those funds from, where they had surpluses, also total two hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-five cents. On the second page, you'll see our Library Improvement Reserve Fund. We budget in general terms for our Library Improvement Reserve Fund as well as our Rainy Day Fund. And therefore, when we actually have expenditures, we like to make sure they're appropriated to category or a line item that actually describes what it's for, instead of just lumping it in with a lot of other it within those two categories. So our increases under the Library Improvement Reserve Fund included minor tech supplies and equipment, software enhancements, technology consultants, building repairs, and technology installation, as well as a small amount of furniture and equipment. And then the offsetting are out of the two major categories that we budget for, which is professional services and technology equipment. So you can see the decreases match our increases. And again, our Library Improvement Reserve Fund is used mostly for technology improvements within the library system. And then for Rainy Day, again, we had professional ground services, which is landscaping in this particular case, and building repairs. And that money was then moved out of our, one of the two major categories budgeted, which is furniture and equipment. So this is presented to the Evansville Vanderburg Public Library, read info and adopted this fifteenth day of December twenty twenty-two with your votes.
Right, so do we, we still need a motion on that though, correct? So we need to have a motion to accept the transfer of appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have a general question, since we brought up the e-audiobooks. As a frequent user of Hoopla, I know that Hoopla does it like I get emails from Hoopla saying, hey, you have three boroughs left for this month. So they they really advertise for Hoopla and knowing that we pay for every one that I check out. Do we get data from Hoopla on if I check out an audiobook, whether I finish it or not? Because just, I mean, probably it's not confession time, but I don't always finish every check out. I know it's shameful, but you know, because we do spend a lot on the audiobooks and we don't get that information.
No.
Okay.
Hoopla is.
Neither platform, as a matter of fact.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Hoopla is the one that charges as you check it out. And then the Overdrive or Libby is when you, we actually buy the titles and then you can check it out. And so and part of that.
That Hoopla knows whether or not I finish it, because if I check it out again, it says you were halfway through this book.
Yeah. Yeah. The with Libby and Overdrive, those are the ones that we purchase so many. And then if we have a hold list of so long, then we start purchasing additional titles, and that's where a lot of the expense comes in.
Okay.
What's the limit for whole time? What's the limit for whole time before you end up buying new licenses? Because I've had it up to, you can get it in fourteen weeks or something like that.
Typically, if it's if the hold period's that long, then we start looking to buy additional copies so that it shortens that period of time. I know I've received notice that it could take eight weeks, but then two weeks later I have it. So and it also depends on how quickly people read and or listen and turn them in.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I think it's a budgeting thing, but I always always wonder about, you know, what you need to increase. When you select where you're decreasing it from, were those just categories that had extra in them?
Yes.
There's nothing's gonna get damaged or hurt.
No, I I track throughout the year, but then the last three months, last quarter of the year, I actually, starting in September, I start checking at least twice a month, and then more frequently in November and December, just to make sure that we have funds in particular areas that we can transfer from. So and I make sure that all of our expenditures through the end of the month are accounted for, our encumbrances are accounted for before I start transferring out of those particular line items.
And then I should know this, but then when we are formulating follow-up budgets, are these factored, these decreases and increases factored into the run rates?
Yes, to some extent, unless we have an anomaly in a particular year, because this is now six months after our budget has been prepared and put together. So we'll start looking at that for twenty twenty-four if we haven't already accounted for it. And I also kind of track if we have two years in a row where we've been short in a particular line item, then that next year, I try to make sure that we increase it, knowing that that's the trend that is increasing. The expenditures are increasing.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the transfer of appropriations, please signify by saying aye. Those opposing, nay. Motion carries, and I believe, Lori, you need signatures on that.
Yes, please. On the left-hand side, it says I, and Richard twice, the secretary.
All right, moving on. Lori, encumbrance.
So I'm also prepared for your resolution to encumber library funds, where it's been determined that it's now necessary to encumber appropriations from the Library Operating Fund, Library Improvement Reserve Fund, and the Rainy Day Fund for items which have been purchased, which have purchase orders having not yet been delivered, and services which have yet to be met to further projects of the Evansville Vanderburg Public Library during twenty twenty-two. You'll see in the packet there a list. There the front page is more or less a cover page with the resolution, and then the accompanying pages, the first one being the Library Operating Fund, and these again are services or products that we have not received yet or have not been completed. Some are in the in progress and others have are just getting started. Others because of weather, timing, and what they entail may have to wait until after the first of year in twenty twenty-three. Library Improvement Reserve Fund, the same. Most of that is, again, technology-related items that as we've all seen, the supply chain and supply demand has we've seen a lot of backordering. The very first one is top of that page, which is our fellow Schrader, it's for the server switches, and that has been on order since March. We're still waiting. And then under Rainy Day, those are more of our building type of projects. Browning Chapman is the one, of course, who is working on our deck and garage out here. And so the remainder of that project has a hundred six thousand dollar balance. Some landscaping out at North Park. The furniture that you approved purchasing, that'll come in later this month, but we won't get the invoice after the first of the year. And then the industrial contractors purchase order that you just approved for the North Park and Oakland work as well as Ace Roofing for the Snow Guard up here on Central Surf. So this is presented to the Evansville Vanderburg Public Library and to be adopted this fifteenth day of December twenty twenty-two.
Do we have that in the form of a motion? And a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion regarding that? All those in favor of accepting the encumbrance of the twenty twenty-two funds, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. And I believe is the signature, separate signature.
Separate signatures, same side.
Right, and I believe Lisa. We're looking at the holiday and closing schedule for next year.
So in your packet, you will find a list of the full schedule of closed holidays and basically closures and holidays for twenty twenty-three. You will also notice that we have added requesting President's Day and Veterans Day to the list of holidays. This does take our list up to fourteen days for the holiday. You'll also notice that there's some closures due to the way the holiday is falling on the weekend. So under your notes section, it's kind of telling you how we are observing those holidays during those weekends. So EVPL is seeking the board's approval of the holiday and library closure scheduled for twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? The motion and a second. Any discussion?
I was gonna just ask, well, now on the observed days, do those correspond or are they different than like EVSC and how they're gonna do them?
I have not looked at that. Basically, we kind of, basically, the way that we usually have done it is if it falls on a Saturday, then we observe it the week before because of our payroll beginning on Sunday. If it's a Sunday, then we usually always close the Sunday, the Monday after. So of course, if Central, it's closed as well on that Sunday. But then you also have it to where we'll be closed the day after.
Yeah, I don't think there's a right answer. I just think there's pros and cons to either matching or not.
We we try to when we can.
It's mostly on that Christmas and New Year's. So Christmas is doesn't matter, since EVSC is never in. New Year's, I think we might be a touch off maybe one day. I know this year we're closed on the second for the observance, and I believe EVSC is doing a teacher-only day on the second. So the kids aren't in school, but the teachers have to report. So it may be somewhere like that.
And also because of the way the holiday fell for twenty twenty-four, for the first and the second, we went ahead and had to add that in on the list as well, so that we can go ahead and make that plan for the scheduling, et cetera.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of accepting the holiday and library closure schedule as presented, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, Lori, back to you with.
I'm sorry, still me. Employee handbook revision.
I skipped right over it.
You're fine. And the employee handbook as a whole was done back in two thousand and fifteen. We've been working on trying to get it revised for a while. So there are three sections that we have brought out that we would like to revisions that we'd like to go ahead and have approved if all possible. Legal counsel has looked at this and legal counsel is currently working on our current revision of the handbook that we hope to bring in January of twenty twenty-three. So we're asking that these revisions take effect as of January the first of twenty twenty-three. You'll find we're Sunday comp hours. We are asking to remove the example of the work week in the first paragraph, and then to remove the second and third paragraph to read that persons who work onsite on Sunday receive double compensation, double time compensation in a form of compensatory time off in the same work week. Basically, what we've had before is if you didn't work, if you weren't scheduled to work and you came in for two hours, then you wouldn't get compensation for that. So that's why we're requesting kind of to make it equal to everybody that would come in. Now that is onsite. So if you're working from home, it's a little bit of a different, it would just be if you come in onsite. Under the sick leave portion, we would like to change the second paragraph in D seven to allow part-time employees working a minimum average annual average of twenty hours a week to be eligible for sick leave. Part-time employees receive forty-eight hours of sick leave time accumulative to three hundred and sixty hours. And then we will remove the last two sentences of that pair, that that section within that paragraph. And then Appendix C, Vacation Accrual and Leave Guidelines. We would like to change the monthly vacation allotment to be earned as the first day rather than the last day. Of course, this is because of our HRIS system. It's kind of been kind of Jamie's been basically having go in manually make those changes because of the way the policy is written. And with UKG, it's better to do it at the first of the month. It makes it easier for all employees that are trying to track their time to be able to get that time upfront. So the proposal is to request the board to approve the employee handbook revision stated December the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two to be effective for January the first of twenty twenty-three.
We have that in the form of a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Do you have a question about the vacation time ordered? So it says we'll be awarded as of the first calendar day of each month. And you have to work the full month in order to earn any of the so before, when it was at the end, I understood that I had to work that whole month and then I get it. I think it's a little vague. I know Steve is out right now, but I wondered, you know, you have to work the full prior month, really, isn't it?
Well, it's funny you said that because Steve, actually, we talked about that because further down into those those numbers within the full appendix section, we kind of cover that. So the way it's meant to be that if you are hired in the middle of the month, then you wouldn't get in any point, you you get no, and then if you're hired at the very end, you wouldn't, basically, you have to work the full month and to be able to get it. So if you were released or you left employment, then you would not get compensated for that time.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And the other thing, Rick, is when we hire a new employee, they accrue their time, but they don't take, they're not allowed to take time in their probationary period.
Three months.
In the first three months. So they've already accrued three months worth of time before they start going. What really got us into problems is the months of January and December. Because the way our policy is currently written now, we can only carry over eighty hours in December to the next fiscal year. But we earn whatever you earn. In my case, it's fourteen hours of leave on December thirty-first. So I have to plan to try and use that before I even earn it.
Before the
Correct.
That's where the confusion was. So we wanted to make sure because.
And it's a record-keeping nightmare for our employees.
Exactly. And HRIS system manages it seamlessly. So.
So any further discussion? Questions? All right, all those in favor of accepting the changes to the employee handbook as presented, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Lisa.
Now, Lori.
In your packet is the eleven months ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two appropriations report. As you can see, we had three million two hundred forty thousand ten dollars and seventeen cents as our appropriation balance or the equivalent of twenty-one percent of the budget left. And that does include, we did the transfer to LRF prior to month, and so that is included in that packet. But we did a lot of spending, as you saw in the director's report, our aka Santas Elf Jill Johnson was very busy making purchases and online shop shopping. I said, it should be a dream job. She said, no, it's a nightmare. But so we spent quite a bit of that in December. So we should be on target of where we wanted to be for the end of the year as far as our appropriation budget. I would note that a lot of that twenty-one percent is actually within our salaries and benefits line. So what we can. So what we can spend, we're spending it, it's the other because of the vacancies and attrition and things like that.
Thank you, Lori. Moving on to investments.
So our investments at the end of November uh, for all four funds that are in the Indiana, Trust Indiana State Investment Pool. Was twelve million, one hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. The average daily yield for November was three point five seven three two or up uh, six seven, sixty-seven tenths of a percentage. And then the average daily yield year to date was one point one two two nine, also up point um, two tenths of a percent um, from the prior month. And just got noticed from Trust Indiana that we just went up fifty basis points this week. So should be seeing some additional interest increases.
All right, moving on, approval of bills, Sabrina.
Yes, ma'am. So I move for approval of the invoices dated November the ninth of twenty twenty two through December fifteenth. Of twenty-two uh, for nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-six cent. And for payroll uh, dated November the fourth of twenty twenty two for two hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-nine cent. And November eighteenth of the twenty twenty-two, three hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars and ten cent.
Thank you. That's in the form of a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the approval of bills, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. All right, Scott. The Integrated Library System.
Integrated Library System. As you all have been reading about for months, uh, we have put together a task force this year to investigate the possibility of uh, migrating to a new integrated library system. Was it worth migrating? Is there a system out there that's better than ours that the staff feel would work better and serve our patrons better? Both from the online public access catalog to downloading the eBooks through the catalog to their back-of-house services circulating books and everything like that. And through this process, um, we. Developed an RFP and sent it out to um, the ILS vendors. I received three back, one from Polaris, one from Cersei, and one from OCLC. Um, who all are industry um, standard ILS folks. And um, we brought, we did online demonstrations when we started this process with all vendors. And we brought two finalists in to do onsite. Presentations, not only with the task force, but also we included. All of the interested staff members to participate in that and had multiple sessions where they could come view the new ILS system and see what they thought of it. And um, they gave us our feedback to the task force. And through this process, um. We decided that we'd like to recommend um. Clarivate's Polaris system um, to migrate to, which is actually the company that owns our current ILS system, um, Innovative Interfaces Incorporated. Um, they were bought and merged together several years ago, Polaris and Triple I. Um, as well as Ex Libris, and now they're owned by the holding company Clarivate um, as the owner of those. But part of the thing is um, they're putting their efforts on. Polaris for public libraries, like Libris for academic libraries, although they're continuing to patch and maintain our current ILS. But um. They're doing more of the innovative things um, with the Polaris system and the staff really seem to like it. But with that, we also wanted to add what's called an ILS overlay. And we viewed um, companies that produce an ILS overlay that um, eases the use of downloading your eBooks and also adds federated searching. Of like our databases, which I think personally is important for us because uh, we do put a library card in third grade through twelfth grade. There's hands and we have three universities or colleges and universities here in town. So it helps with student research and makes that easier. And so they were recommending to go with the Aspen overlay by Bywater Solutions. Um, price for Polaris um, first year would be roughly a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Um, if, and. For the overlay, um, first year would be twenty-eight thousand for the Aspen overlay. Year two and continuing on as that contract goes will be fifteen thousand a year for the overlay. And ninety-nine thousand a year for the Polaris, ninety-nine thousand, four forty-one for the next two years for Polaris. And right now, that is cheaper than what we're paying for our current um, ILS when you combine the two. So we're actually saving money by migrating. Although on the back end, and I say this to the cataloging staff, the public service staff. Um, the technical services staff, the operational opportunity cost of learning a new system and getting everything set up will be tremendous. But in the long run, it will make us a better organization and make things much more user-friendly for um, the public and the staff in the long run. But it will be a huge learning curve, but it'll be worth it in the end. And we talked about all this when we're going through the process. It's not just about money. It has to be about ease of use and um, a benefit to the community. And this is what the, the task force would like to present to the board.
All right, do we have that in the form of a motion to migrate to the recommended new ILS with the overlay as recommended?
Adam President, I have a question. I'm willing to make a motion, but if I could ask a question before, can I, Steve? Does it have to get on the floor as a motion first?
She asked for a discussion, right?
I asked for a motion.
Oh, okay. Oh, gotcha.
Okay, so uh, motion to approve as proposed.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Now we can open to discussion.
Okay. So our current, we're paid through late twenty-three. Are we going to be paying for two?
No. Thank you, Brett.
Current ILS Sierra, the subscription runs out August slash September next year. This cut over should be done. End of June, early July. Our goal is to have it completely cut over so we didn't not paying for two overlapping contracts. And as Scott mentioned, it's the same vendor Clarivate. Um, they know our data, so migrating data from one ILS to the other should be a lot smoother. And save a lot of time. So I'm not expecting any delays and any overlap.
So is that, was that contract, Lori? Was that paid in twenty-two? So it just is going to run out in twenty-three or we're going to have a payment due in twenty-three?
So we paid in August for current Sierra system.
From August to August.
August to August, and then we will pick up with the new contract.
August.
Yes.
So we're honestly not paying.
No, we won't. Yeah, we won't.
Everything goes.
You might have one month overlap.
Yeah. Yeah.
At the most.
And we could pay a single month versus an entire year's worth of contract or.
I've never had a company when I've migrated do that to us when we're.
Yeah.
Doing that. They just don't do that. It's part of your operational cost for your first. The way it breaks down is you have your annual maintenance cost and then you have your one-time fees. The one-time fee for the migration process is sixty-one thousand. Um, for, for Clarivate, for Polaris. And then the maintenance contract, the annual fee that we pay is ninety-nine thousand.
Okay.
And because they're the same company, they, they won't.
They, they will, yeah.
Payment-wise.
Yeah, we've, we've already got a preliminary timeline that shows it's supposed to be finished at the end of June and staff training and then cut over early July.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, we worked very hard to negotiate this contract. We got them to throw in um, change management training. As well as their app that allowed you to self-check using the app.
Yeah, so I absolutely appreciate the way.
And the tester.
Gone about. I know it's a huge deal.
It is, it is. And I just want to commend all the staff that participated in that and all the hard work they do because it is not an easy thing. And it's hard to anticipate change like that.
Yep.
And Brett did a great job doing it.
Question on the, on the upfront migration charges, that sixty-one thousand. Is that all encompassing or is it, that is the starting point and there are additional potential charges of T N M? Or additional consulting or is this? That's it?
That's, that's, there, there is potential if they run into something expect, unexpected, and that is in the proposal in our order form. Um, at two hundred dollars an hour. Um, I don't foresee that to be any charges, any extra charges because it's the same vendor cutting over the data. They're familiar with the data. But there is, of course, this project is humongous. I'm not going to say there's no potential for extra cost when they're cutting over data. That's why they include that potential charge in that order form.
Are there, are there any assets we need to purchase, like different servers or anything?
And it's a hosted solution, so it's on their servers.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Nothing we have.
No. Our current ILS is in the cloud and solo this one, and the overlay is also in the cloud. So there's no extra hardware purchases on our end.
As far as the data goes, none of that is our data per se, or is it?
Well, it is our data. They're hosting it in the, in the cloud.
Could we back that up?
Yes, it's part of the contract. They have backups.
So they have like disaster recovery.
They do, yes.
Yes, I, I have more questions for them on desk. Does it disaster recovery and where their data centers are? Uh, to make sure there's redundancy and not just in one data center. Um, they've also listed in their order form how many backups they do, how long they retain the data.
And again, that's all wrapped up in both serves charge and the setup.
Yes, that's part of the charge. There's no extra charges for that.
Yep. But good questions.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the Integrated Library System RFP. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Scott, do you want to discuss the uh, library solicit, solicitation?
Um, yeah, at our last meeting, um, we had a patron request to um, visit our solicitation policy. And the board asked us to table it and have our legal counsel look at that, which we did. Um, and just so you know, we did review all of our policies and any policy changes are always reviewed by our attorneys. And um, that was done last March, um, if you remember. But we did get with our attorneys and our attorneys have recommended that um. We keep our policy as it stands. They feel that it is easier um, to defend that policy as an all or none. And if we open up for signs, even political signs, that we have to open up for all signs in all time a year. Is, is what I was told, but Steve is here to answer any questions you may have. They did a lot of diligence looking at um, case law. And this is a policy that um, they have looked at for many years for, for the library. And I know it seems counterintuitive. That's why we do our best to have things in partnerships like with the legal women voters and have our political forums, our legislative forums. Here at the library and as well as people can canvas um, holding a sign, but actually planning an unattended sign. Is, is something that they feel we can't do just because then it opens up. The possibility that anyone can place a sign and we can't defend it. It has to be because of how the library is created as. Um, a limited public forum and we have to be equal and to everyone and open to every, everyone. And by setting up a standard even for just early voting, um, they advise us that that is harder for them to, to defend if someone else wanted to place signs. Elsewhere any other time of the year, but they are certainly welcome to um, canvas and hold a sign. Um, as long as it's within the state laws, state regulations, fifty feet from the chute of the line. Did I cover that well, Steve? I'm not an attorney, so.
I mean, basically, we look, we did this policy originally. We didn't want, we did not want sign clutter around the library. I mean, that's, and, and that's a legitimate interest of government. You don't go any place with any public buildings. You, whether you're talking about the Civic Center or whether you're talking about the Federal Building or whatever you're talking about. You don't have signs posted all over it because it's cluttered. And the Supreme Court has dealt with this issue on a number of times. They banned, in one case, all signs uh, in the state of, or in the city of uh, Los Angeles. And they upheld it. Um, they did, there's another one in Philadelphia, uh, a case that came out of there. It wasn't a Supreme Court case, but it was a court of appeals case. And basically said, we don't have to accept the visual clutter that comes along with the signs. Um, you can hold a sign, but we don't want to plant it in our yard. If you, if you look at our yards, they were designed originally by the architect to be welcoming to people to come into a library. You know, if you have, if you drive down Walnut Street and it's one sign after another. Uh, whether, it won't be just political signs. It could be pro-abortion, anti-abortion, for guns, against guns. You know, it, it can be that you open up speech, then you open it up. Right now, the policy was written in a content-neutral way so that we don't discriminate against anyone. Um, I mean, that doesn't keep them from carrying a sign, but it does keep them from planting it on our yard. Which, and you know, if they want to, and what the Supreme Court says, if you want to plant it on somebody, you aren't good on private property. Uh, you don't need to do it on public po, property. We also looked at it from another perspective, and that's that we have polling places uh, here and what rights you have. And I, I think it's easy to forget that. In the old days, when the government, when we were first formed. The reason that we restrict. Electioneering, it's a criminal offense in the state of Indiana to electioneer in the poll. Um, and the reason for that is because of the old days. And, and there's a lot of history that goes with that. You, you had to bring your own ballot to the polling place. And so there would be all the kind of people greeting you, wanting to give you the poll, the ballot so when you walked in the polling place. Uh, and there was a lot of intimidation going on. I've assumed, I've heard that there was vote buying and things like that that went on right there at the poll entrance. And, and basically, they say you can't do that. Uh, and basically what happened is, is, is in Indiana, we have what they call a chute. And that's a C H U T E, you know, when you enter the polling place. Uh, you, you've got to stand back a certain way and let people enter that area. So you can't electioneer in the first place, you know, at a polling place. So we don't, the, the Supreme Court kind of did a, a very. A, a very in-depth analysis of the right to the First Amendment, to the right to get to a polling place and vote. You know, without being intimidated or having a lot of people there. And they said that they're both fundamental rights, uh, right to speak and whatever. But that doesn't include the right to put signs all over the place or anything else. But there's nothing to prevent you from standing outside the chute. And, and handing out whatever you want to hand out. We're not trying to prevent that at all. But what we're trying to prevent is people cluttering our yards uh, with signs. And I, and I don't think there's any interest. We're a library. We're, we're not, we're not a park. You know, where people can speak and say whatever they want to say whenever they want to say it. What, basically, we want people to come in here and be able to read in quiet, you know, without having a lot of hoopla. And so we, we tailored the policy on aesthetic grounds, and that's tracks the language of the Supreme Court. That they use is to say we don't need visual clutter. You can do these things for aesthetic reasons, and that's why we did it.
Steve. Uh, when you say shoot or in entering the polling place, what qualifies as that uh, for the library? When second floor is where I go to.
It's the entrance.
It's a distance.
It's a distance from the entrance.
From the entrance to the building, not the entrance to the second floor place, but the entrance to the building.
You post signs all through the library, so I don't think there's any problem and, and we don't allow people to, you know, congregate in the library anyway. So I don't think we'd have a problem there.
Good.
Good question. Why would, and, and one, I was just kind of curious why we did it under solicitation as opposed to a specific. And it was just kind of that way we could fall under, nobody can do.
Well, and I think Bob walking out of, out here raised a thing on the first sentence that, you know, that we, that we have to do it. And I, I didn't, I did not look at that today. But. I looked at the sign problem because that was the way the, the issue was raised to me was that somebody wanted to plant a sign and keep it there unattended. And I just don't see that there's any, any reason why we would want to do that. Uh, it's our property. Um, it's content neutral. We don't, we don't want any signs there. It's not, they're banning one type of sign.
I just, I think my mind when I. It's solicitation and peddling. That has a specific meaning as opposed to electioneering. And that's what I, I mean, we really.
Yeah, I, I think the original intent was to, you know, people come and want to sell their stuff.
I'll get that.
And we had, and the last, not this presidential election. But I think it was when the Sanders people wanted to come uh, and meet, they wanted to go into the library to solicit. And we wouldn't allow them to do it. And we said we would call the police if they did that. Um, I mean, they wanted, the, the, they wanted to actually stand at the door and we said you can't do that. So that was one of the concerns that we had was these political campaigns, whatever they may be, wanting to come in, you know, and stop people at the door. And we were trying to prevent that is what we were trying to do. That's why I think that probably got grafted on there like it did.
So, my understanding is we do, we do not have a motion at this time, this is a report back to the board, which is what we requested.
Right.
And I will, I will speak on Bob's behalf, he did have to leave, and he he has some more information he would like to share with the rest of the board. But obviously had to leave and was unable to share that information. So at this point, we do not have a motion, which would mean our policy would stand as is. If a board member wants to lift that again, or if, if it's the board's pleasure to consider changing the policy, or changing some of the verbiage in the policy. Then my understanding would be, that would need to be a motion that could either happen today or at a later meeting.
Yeah, and I told Bob I would share my research with him after this meeting.
So.
Make him happy, but I do think that it's, it's a, it's a, it's a very there's a real good reason why we've done it this way. I can understand if you're running a political campaign, you might want it another way, but I think once you open that up for that political campaign, or the next political campaign, and there's actually, the Supreme Court said, you just can't open up for political purposes, because once you open it up for political purposes, you're opening it up for everything, you know, somebody could plant whatever sign, whatever they feel. Whether you're for abortion, against abortion, for guns, against guns, and we don't, I mean, that's not what we, we do here, we don't need that clutter in our library.
So, this is on our packet, is this coming to us as a recommendation from the staff and from council?
Both. Both, yeah, it was, the board asked us to research and have legal counsel review this policy.
We had, we had a visitor to the
Correct, she's here today.
Yeah. She can't speak. Yeah, unfortunately, we're already past the comment, the public comments section, but I do appreciate, and I do think, I think most of us were here when you spoke last time, so, but I do. So, given our policy, though, it sounds
I need to pull them if they're still there, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion, questions?
So I was here when we talked about this, so if we've, if the board directed council to research this, is this the policy right here that we're looking at as it is today?
As it is today, is my understanding correct?
So, so your, your, your suggestion is leave the policy stand?
Yes.
And make no edits?
Right.
So then we don't need to do anything?
Which would require no action.
I would ask that if you do share additional research with representative or board member Usgrave, would you share it with the entire board?
Certainly, I mean, technically, I really should share it with the board president and let her share it. I think the way our bylaws are written.
Correct.
So.
I'll be happy to do that.
And I, I will share it with her, and she can share it with anyone that she wants, so.
Thanks.
So you have more information than tonight that you wanted?
Well, we have, we have other, I mean, I have a lot of cases here that back up what I said, but I, I don't think we should just open up the policy just so the people can post signs on our property unattended, and, and that was what I was asked to speak about. And I, I just don't see any good reason for doing or making a change for that.
Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, I have a, I just have a clarifying point. If we, if we ask the attorney to bring us some information back to the board. And we've heard this, so the additional information that you have just speaks more to the same thing that you're saying, is that correct? There's not, so, so there's really nothing more that he's gonna say, other than to do the same thing that he's saying?
I mean, I could send some case law to you, just
But it's just more, it's more the same, so, so the action of this board now is to either I mean, do we just comment if we want to, if someone does not want to make a motion, then that means that it stays as it is, right?
Right.
Okay, so.
Right.
This, I'm not cheering, but does anybody else have any? So we, no action, okay, just for the record, okay, thank you.
And Steve, if you will share that information, I'll be happy to share with your
Okay, I will email you. I'm not gonna deluge with it, but I, I will give you a couple of cases and sites, you know, for what I'm talking about, there's a couple of leading Supreme Court cases on it. I'll share those, and you can share it with any board member.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and Scott, do you want to address the Architective Record recommendation?
Sure, the Building and Grounds Committee recently met, and last meeting, we, the board made a motion to move forward with seeking bond funding to try and complete our facilities plan, if available, if, if bonds are approved. And if that should be the case, we need to have Architective Record for the board, now Architect of Record is normally hired by the administrative staff, there's a contractor's fees, and we wanted to get the okay to do that, the Building and Grounds Committee, when we discussed this, would like to have MKM be our Architect of Record. And please, Building and Grounds Committee, if I've missed anything, please jump right in, and for our facilities projects going forward.
And since that, I think will end up as a motion, so, so that we can discuss it, can we have that as a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Now, open for discussion.
So I have, I have no concern with the recommendation of the committee. I, I just want to make sure the motion doesn't read the way this recommendation does. And it just only part of it concerns me as the Architect of Record for future, even giving the impression it's for imp and item, you know, it's forever.
Just for this bonding portion, for this bond sequence.
But it says
You could add the
It doesn't say that, though.
For future EVPL Facilities Master Plan twenty twenty-two, you adopted that plan this year, early this year, so if you want to put the year on the
For the projects listed with them.
For the plan that was adopted this year, I think we could add that one year.
To amend the the current
Current motion? Yeah, I can, I'll make a motion to amend the original motion to say to keep a consistency of the vision created in the twenty twenty-two Facilities Master Plan. It is a recommendation of Building and Grounds Committee that EVPL Board of Trustees approved the hiring of MKM Architecture Plus Design as the Architect of Record for, for future EVPL twenty twenty-two Facilities Master Plan projects. Second.
As I said, Richard agreed, though, you can do a friendly amendment, you don't have to do an amendment to the motion and then vote twice.
Be friendly.
That's friendly.
Friendly amendment?
I think we're friendly. Any further? Any further discussion? Okay. All right, all those in favor of accepting the motion as most recently presented by Mr. Cameron, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
And on those same lines at this time, to keep this ball moving with the potential of trying to further our facilities plan. We recently did request for quotes for our bond fiscal attorney and our fiscal advisors for bonding that we are currently using on the McCullough Bond. Is it the board's pleasure that we continue to do this and use those two same terms for the next sequence of bonding for the additional projects in the master facilities plan, or would you like us to get additional RFQs that we just did a couple of months ago for those services? We're very happy with their services right now as an administration, when we work with them, they're very highly reputable, but it's, it's up to you, now, obviously, when contracts come back and they're big, they're gonna be going through Steve, and there will be money associated that is paid back through the bond funds.
I guess it was my assumption that we had kind of recommended taking them all the way through the master plan.
I just, for clarity, I just wanted to bring that up here to make sure.
You remember what the motion was?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Maybe I don't remember that, I thought it was more, we had one bond issuance, bang.
We separated them?
Right.
Okay, so I certainly could be wrong in that assumption.
Yeah, in my, in my opinion, I think just as part of due diligence, we at least I think owed, owed at least to do a, is there a cursory?
So then, as I understand, Architect of Record is something we really needed to take.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. With, with that said, we'll have Lori do another request for quotes for fiscal services and bond attorney services.
Thank you. All right, and our final approval is the twenty twenty-three board meeting schedule. Do we have that in the form of a motion?
So moved.
In a second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? The well, actually. Mr. Cameron, I, I don't think I'm supposed to add to the conversation on this, but we might want to consider that October twelfth date, Mr. Cameron, will that be the new fall break for it?
Oh, I'm very bad at calendars, so it was like the earlier question, does this coincide with EBFC calendar, I, I mean, I work it on a day-to-day basis, but if that is in fall break, does, why would that mean that we couldn't do it?
I was just thinking of attendance, I was with children traveling and
Oh, that might be out.
We need
other members.
It's not Fall Fest, I know that.
Okay.
Unless somebody has personally utilized the video camera, it's, it's easy to attend.
Oh.
It's gonna be on
All right, so that would not be, I just wanted to bring, I just noticed that, I hadn't noticed it.
I'm retiring and
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the board meeting dates for twenty twenty-three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. All right, announcements.
I'll just say that the opportunity to have breakfast with staff the other day was much appreciated and very enjoyable.
Thank you.
And I regret not making it, a little under the weather. When you new officers?
At the next meeting? At the next meeting, we will be voting on new officers, I emailed all of the board members the recommended slate based on the nominating committee recommendations, so you were informed, I think our, I think our policy was twenty-five days prior to voting. So you received it well in advance of that, and we'll be voting at the next meeting, and there's a high probability that I will be stepping aside at that point. Any other announcements?
Thank everyone, and wish everyone great holidays. I will be in town, but I will be on vacation through the end of the year, I have to lose my vacation time or it's lost to me, so.
Do that before the first day of the month.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Get that, working on it.
Yeah, but thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to
I have one, I have one, this is just a comment, I am, I work on so many different you know, organizations, and from time to time, I have to run into the library for different stuff, and I'm always in a hurry, right? And every time I go, no matter which one I go to, which branch I go to, everybody's so helpful, they, of course, I just go in just as a frantic person. You know, so I just wanted to just give a shout out to all of the branches, because I hit every last one of them. And it's just, just phenomenal, you know, very you know, they're aware of, of where they are, they know how to direct you, they're courteous, they're kind, they're not easily disturbed, and I, it's just, it's very refreshing to see, and I just want them to, for the record, thank you.
Thank you for the comments. All right, we stand adjourned this December fifteenth. Thank you all very, very much, and have a wonderful holiday.
No, I appreciate it. I've got one, I just Yeah, we just sent them all.
I sent. Were they under the right?
Yeah, I think they're under that. Thank you.